Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. It is the symbol of perfect friendship among New Mexicoans.
Are there any changes that need to come to the agenda today? I think, Margaret, were you wanting to give a report today? You want to just do it under county reports? Okay, we can do that. Since we need no changes, can we get a motion to approve it?
Motion to accept, Mr. President. Second.
There's a motion to approve the work session. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify to say no.
Aye aye.
Motion passed. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no input permitted at this meeting. Okay, first item on the agenda is Michael Sharp from Research and Polling. He's going to give us a presentation of possible redistricting plans. Good morning.
Good morning. Have a nice drive when you're on site. Good morning, he rode.
Yes.
Went over the black ridge, huh? Nobody was on.
Brave or stupid, but, um...
It's kind of a...
We do it, so I mean, we don't even notice it.
We'll consider brave. But I guess it's good that I couldn't see how far I could drop off the side tonight. Anyway, my name's Michael Sharp and I've...
Push the button there, the white... There you go.
Perfect. The big white sign. Little notice there. Thank you very much. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and so I guess it looks like it's being... The PC's being set up. But, well, that's going. A little background about me, my name's Michael Sharp and Vice President at Research and Polling. We've been doing redistricting for a fairly long time. I've been with the company since 92, I think. So this'll be my third go-round with respect to redistricting. Worked on redistricting following 1990 census, the 2000 census, and the 2010 census. And about, I guess, four years ago, we helped the county determine that, with respect to redistricting, that you didn't have to redistrict. By law, you're supposed to at least take a look at whether or not you should redistrict after each census, because the new population numbers come out from the 2010 census, and you had to look at your district population numbers and see if your districts are still equal population. Four years ago, we found out that your three election districts still met the population requirements of redistricting. So that's... And then now, you're looking at going to five single-member districts. And so that's the process that we'll look at today. It's not redrawing the current three districts that you have. It is looking at going from three to five members and determining what your potential district alignments could look like. So that's just a little bit of background. In terms of redistricting, there are five basic principles. They are equal population, minority voting rights, compactness, contiguity, and communities of interest. And those, if you think of redistricting concepts, those are the guidelines, the principles, the legal constitutional requirements that are required by us that we must follow when drawing these plans. You can think of the first four: legal population, voting rights, compactness, contiguity, as we'll call it four legs of a table. So you have a nice solid base, and then you have your communities of interest, which kind of sit on top of those solid four legs. So we have requirements, and then we have kind of these nebulous communities of interest that help us to determine what these districts could also look like. So I'm gonna go into the principles here real quick in detail. We also happened... We also did the, in terms of redistricting, we did the Silver City Town Council, we did the Silver City School Board districts, and so we have a little bit of experience locally. And in terms of who districts, I just wanted to mention real quick that this is the county commission's responsibility, and no one else can really tell you what your districts look like. Legislature doesn't have the say, the city, of course, doesn't, but the important thing is this is a decision that's up to the county commission itself. In terms of redistricting, some of the key dates that we have, the census data came out in March of 2011 based on the April 2010 census. And so even though we're five years away from the actual census itself, that is our most recent data, the best data that's available. And so that's the data we must use. There are, yeah, there are population estimates, Silver City for Grant County, but those don't allow us enough detail with respect to the information of the data that we need to draw our districts. And so if the county commission decides to go through and go to five single-member districts, then we would complete this process in time for the election schedule for the, say, the primary, the June primary in 2016. So our goal is to get this done, assuming we go forward, to get this done in a timely enough manner that the county clerk has enough time to reassign voters to the proper So the basic process of redistricting, you have a number of public meetings. This is the first. Should you continue to go through the process, then we have a number of public meetings. This is a work session. You can get input from the county commission. You also have other public hearings where you can get information or input from the members of the public. We can actually... I have three plans. We can modify the plans as well. We can come back to the county commission and determine what those... And change the plans and come back to you with some new ones. And that process goes back and forth until you adopt a plan. So with respect to those pri... The principles of redistricting, with respect to population, one of the questions is asked is who's counted with respect to the census counts. And the quick answer is everyone. And the longer answer is citizens, non-citizens, military personnel, women, children, men, everybody, basically, college students. The census counts you where your primary residence is at the time of the census. So you have a bunch of students here going to western New Mexico. They are counted as if they lived on campus or wherever they happen to live within Silver City. In Otero County, they have Harlem Air Force Base, they have a big German air force contingent. Those Germans were counted within the census. So the census population accounts everybody, so we must use the counts for those particular counts for redistricting.
So, Sergeant, that would be similar to county university students that are not residents here?
Yeah, that's correct. Wherever their, what we call, current primary residence is. So, for example, I went to Mexico State within Albuquerque.
Go ahead.
Part of that... Yeah, that's right. Go ahead. Unfortunately, I didn't do too well in the first round of the tournament, but it seems to be our pattern. So I moved down to Las Cruces for school, and I was there during the 1990 census, and I was counted at New Mexico State.
Okay.
We have a constitutional mandate for equal populations, one person, one vote. And that basically means that wherever you live throughout the county, you have the same amount of representation as anybody else. So every commissioner will represent the same number of people. It's almost like you're dividing up that commissioner by the number of people, and every person has an equal share of commissioner in District One, as the people in District Two have the same share of their commissioner in District Two. It's equal representation. If one district is too big, say a district has 10,000 people, another one has 5,000, the people who live in the district of 10,000 are underrepresented, they have a smaller share of their commissioner. I'm not sure if we're ready to go.
You go. Are you? Okay.
Okay, I'm back. I can't see the screen, so I can see the left and the right side, so if... I can see Grant, C., and Ishan. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and skip through these slides, 'cause we talked about that, that... There's a misprocess, there's a principles table and the tabletop concept, first four of the legs. That's who's counted, the constitutional requirements. This is where we are right now, so we didn't actually get too far into it. So with respect to equal population, the congressional... For congressional districts in New Mexico, the mandate is it's equal to the person. In New Mexico, our congressional districts are perfectly equal. The courts have said, "Well, sometimes it's really hard to get equal districts with respect to the local jurisdictions, for example, county commissions, so we'll allow you a little bit of leeway, plus or minus 5% deviation." We have, and I'll explain deviation in just a moment. So state legislature, county commissions, school boards, town councils, those all have a little bit of leeway with respect to equal population. So ideal population is our measure of equal population. It's simply the total population of your area, of the county, divided by the number of districts that you're looking at. In this particular case, we're looking at five districts. So divide the county spot by five, and every district in the end should be about 5,900 people. But because you're a county, you have a little bit of leeway. Like I said, you have a plus or minus 5% from that ideal population. 5% of 5,900 is about 295. So when we draw districts based on five single-member districts, your districts in terms of population can fall within a range, 5,900 plus or minus 295, and their range is about 5,600 to almost 6,200. And this is based on total population. It's not based on registered voters. So people, yes, the registered voters are the ones who elect you, but in essence, you represent everybody who lives within your district. And so, once again, this is based on total population. Minority voting rights are the second leg, or is the second leg, of our table, and it basically means we must make sure that we have to give the minority groups a chance to elect a candidate of their choice. Doesn't mean that's guaranteed. There are numbers of districts that are majority Hispanic in New Mexico, and there's not necessarily an Hispanic person who's elected. And many times, there are, but it's a matter of giving the Hispanic population an opportunity to elect a candidate of its choice. We can't go so far when drawing these districts that we ignore the other principles, so we want to make sure that districts are still compact, still equal population, and still contiguous, which is another... It's just another table or leg in just a moment. With respect to Grant County, the applicable minority group is the Hispanic population. You don't have a large enough Native American population, or a large enough Asian or Black population, to be able to draw districts where they would make up a majority of any given county commission district. So in this particular case, we're looking at the Hispanic population. In terms of compactness, compactness is an interesting concept in that it's really what the districts look like. What's their shape look like? It's not necessarily how big the district is. You know, you have, within Grant County, you have a District One, which is relatively compact within the middle of the county, and you have a couple districts, two and three, which are fairly large. But it's not really how big the district is in terms of its square... Its square mileage. It is what the boundaries look like on the outside. So that's, in essence, what the concept of compactness is. What does the district look like on the outside? First, the shape, and not geographic size. Let's go back real quick. Is that back or next? Or is that previous? All right. Oh, yeah. So the last point, compactness is also a function of your building blocks. So when you have precincts that aren't necessarily square, then when you build districts based off precincts that have funny shapes, then your districts wind up having some funny shapes as well. Grant County has some precincts that are interestingly shaped, but that's a function of the boundary lines that they're based on. And so it's kind of a legal requirement that also dictate the shape of your precinct boundaries.
And by that you mean creep beds, roads?
That's right.
Things like that?
That's right. We can't really use, for precinct boundaries, we can't use township range section lines that are nice and straight. We have to use generally physical features, generally.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So here's a couple examples of compactness. I kept these all the same year. These are, what, 25 years ago? But the concept is the same, and they're all apples to apples. The district on the left, or the map on the left, is New Mexico's northern congressional district, the third congressional. It's pretty much the same now as it was back then, but it's pretty compact. It may have some wiggles on the bottom, but that's still pretty good. The one on the right, that was, on the top right, is in Texas, that's Houston. And there's a district... Let's see if I can get them out here. This little, it looks purple on my paper, so this, whatever color this is on the screen. So this one was determined to be unconstitutional. You can actually see it wraps around that green district, all the way around, the little necks of maybe 100 feet. So the court basically said, "No, you can't do this. This district was drawn solely for the purpose of maximizing minority representation," but they did so in a way that violated a bunch of other redistricting principles. And so that was deemed unconstitutional. Had to redraw those boundaries. The bottom one is the North Carolina district. That was deemed unconstitutional as well. It was drawn to maximize minority representation for the Black communities in North Carolina. And the courts basically said, "That's such a bizarre shape, you ignored other principles." That's unconstitutional. They have to redraw that one as well. So the previous one, that New Mexico district, yeah, it's really large, but it's still compact. It's kind of what that district algorithm looks like. Fourth, whatever table's contiguity, basically means every district has to be made up of one piece. I mean, it's simple. So when you put on a map, if you put your pencil on the district, you have to be able to get to every other part of the district without lifting up your pencil. So as an example, the...
Is that as the crow flies, or is that on roads?
It is. Neither.
So you're talking about just... It all has to touch each other?
That's right.
Okay.
If you just have the district boundary, and you removed all on a map, you remove...
So you could potentially have a mountain that separates two districts that you have to drive through another district to get to, but it would still be contiguous because it's all together?
That's right. That's correct. So the, just the figure on the right, you see District A is in two pieces, is not contiguous. We will not do anything like that. And final, so those are the four legs of our table. Now, this kind of provides the foundation, and then the communities of interest can determine what your table on top looks like: oval, square, amoeba, whatever it happens to be. So everything else that you can take into consideration. You can look at the core of existing districts. You can look at the locations of your current commissioners, which is perfectly fine. You're not required to, but you certainly can. As long as you meet the other requirements, then that's just fine. You can respect political boundaries. In terms of political boundaries, the ones that matter the most to county commissions and the county clerk tend to be precincts. And so we, all the plans we've drawn, respect precinct boundaries. None of the precincts are split.
So just to clarify that, you kept all the precincts exactly as they are today?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Precincts are a basic building block. We don't go to any sub-precinct level. You can also include neighborhoods, any sort of cultural or historical traditions. You can look at using geographic features. If you just wanted to use Highway 180 as a feature all the way through the county, you could certainly try. So anything else that you can think of that could be important when drawing these districts. You could say, you know, please don't split Baird, or Hurley, or Santa Clara. You could have that as a principle. The one thing to remember is that those other four criteria take priority in precedence over these communities of interest. So if you must split a community in order to make districts equal in population, then that's what has to be done. Or you must split a neighborhood, or if you must put two communities together that you'd love to have maybe two district... Districts for representation purposes, but if they have to be together to meet other criteria, then that's generally, that's what will have to be done. Okay. So one thing to remember, the plans are rarely perfect. They're not necessarily set in stone. The three plans I have here are just kind of starting points. You may love them, you may hate them. That's okay. But you can also say, "Jeez, can you make a change here and there, and come back to us and tell us what it looks like?" Okay. I guess with the bigger reveal, one of them. This is just a quick map as a refresher. I'm also gonna put up a map as I talk for the audience. I brought some big ones I can set up on the easels, too, as I go through these plans. Okay, great. As a quick refresher, I know you know your districts, but I just got one at the, I guess, southern state, so to speak. So you have three county commission districts currently. District One is a relatively large district. District, excuse me, hot because it's my first... District One's a relatively small district compared to the others. Two and three are fairly large. District One, Silver City, Arenas Valley, and Santa Clara, which I guess when I started redistricting, it was still called Central. But, so I have to remember that. And District Two is Baird, Hurley, Hanover, White Signal, down to Pecita, and also includes Silver Acres within the Silver City area. District Three, Yule Creek, and then into Silver City a little bit. Not a little bit, actually, quite a bit. So I have some maps. They're also on the inset, some of the plans behind me, but just, three does come into Silver City to basically Cooper, Swan, on its northern part. Wow. I don't know, somewhere around there. It's 32nd, and then it goes up Pinos Altos. So District Three does come into, and basically takes, we'll call it the big chunk of the western part of Silver City. District One has a lot of Silver City going over to Cooper, basically wherever District Three ends, One starts. And District Two, it does come up, like I said, six in Silver Acres. That's Silver City. Let's go here. This is the Santa Clara-Baird-Hurley area, and in District One, it's Santa Clara and Arenas Valley. And District Two, in this particular map, has Baird and Hurley. So those, Baird and Hurley are in District Two. Santa Clara on the south and west of the highway are in District One. So that's our... Okay, so with respect to minority voting rights, it's important to look at the percent Hispanic within the county. This table, the top is organized by district. Down the left, and the total population is in the white row. The adult population is in the gray row. At the very bottom of the, I guess it's the third column, it's the deviation column, is a little word that says "ideal," and ideal population is a... For three districts, it's 9,800. To the right of that ideal is the percent Hispanic adult. So Grant County is almost 50... Excuse me, 44% Hispanic. So when looking at this particular... At three commission districts, you have one that is majority Hispanic, that's District One, at 54% adult Hispanic. That's that fourth column in the gray, for District One, 18-plus row. And the other two are not. District Two's almost there. It's about 50, 45% adult Hispanic. So there's really no way to create two Hispanic districts with three county commission districts. So when drawing five county commission districts, two out of five is about 40%. Well, if you can get two of the five districts to be Hispanic, you pretty much match the percent Hispanic of the county. Okay. Plan A is... And then once, just a reminder, since we're going from three to five, all the districts, one, two, and three, are gonna have to shrink in one way or another. And you're gonna have to fill in some of the areas with districts four and five. So the districts do look generally a little bit different than what you have today. For Plan A, I tried to create three compact districts within the central part of the county, and then two, which were a little bit bigger. District One is really close to what you have today, kind of pulls out of Silver City a little bit. It still has that, it sells the same boundary in the Santa Clara, Baird, and Hurley areas. District Two generally is Baird, Hurley, Hanover, San Lorenzo, but it loses Pinos Altos western and southern Grant County. District Three is a Silver City district, and it loses areas to the north and west. District Four kind of takes in the area, the parts that District Three and Two used to have. So it's a northern, southern, and western district that does wrap around Silver City for the most part, except it does outside of Pinos Altos, and does come down into Silver City a little bit, down to about 32nd Street. District Five is basically Silver City, Tyro, and Silver Acres. Okay, this map just shows... Oops, forgot to put up Plan A on my easel. Okay. As Plan A, you can also see that, in this particular map that's up on the screen, that District Four does come down, has Pinos Altos, and comes down to 32nd within Silver City. If we look at Silver City itself, District One now only goes to Broadway and College. It loses the areas south of those two streets. It used to continue, it used to extend further down into southwestern Silver City. District Three extends over to Pinos Altos Road between Highway 180 and 32nd Street. I guess that's the... That area. And it loses Precinct 20 south of Eighth. Okay, District Four, it's, as I said, comes down to 32nd Street between Little Walnut Road and Pinos Altos Road. District Five is everything south of basically Eighth, College, and Broadway. So District One's still pretty close to what you have today, just loses some folks within Silver City. District Three goes into Silver City a little bit more, a little bit different place. In Plan A, it's, I guess, identical to what you have today in terms of the Santa Clara, Hurley, and Baird areas. So Santa Clara is still in One, but Hurley and Baird are still in District Two, as is Okay, in terms of the population numbers, you'll see that the very bottom number of the deviation column is the ideal pop, is now 5,900 for five districts. You also notice that in terms of the percent Hispanic, remember I mentioned the county's 43% Hispanic, adult Hispanic? In this particular plan, we can actually create two districts that are adult Hispanic, Districts One and Two at 56 and 59% adult Hispanic respectively. So 40% of the districts are Hispanic, matching the 40, roughly 40% of the county that's Hispanic. Total deviation, remember we can go to plus or minus 5%. It doesn't mean we have to use that full 5%. District Two, you know, this is about 3.5% above the ideal. District One's about minus 2% below, total deviation of 5.8%. So that's still within that 10% total deviation that's allowed. So they're still pretty equal in population. I mean, we could get these more... We could get these equal high populations, but you have to split precincts, and I prefer not to do that if we don't have to. And these numbers are still pretty good, and they meet the legal... And these numbers are still pretty good, and they meet the legal and constitutional requirements of equal population. Okay, Plan B is a little bit different look in Silver City compared to A. I left Districts one and two alone compared to District A, so trying not to talk too much about those two. District three is now the western, northern, southern district that comes into Silver City. Before, it was simply a Silver City district. District five is a northern Silver City district, and we'll show that in another map. District four, when compared to Plan A, is actually the same as District five, I just want, it's just a renumbering. I just wanted to show you that when drawing these districts, that the numbers aren't necessarily set in stone either. You could say, well, geez, we want the one in southern Silver City to be District four instead of District five. And District three does come into Silver City, again, it's that rural district, does come into Silver City a little bit near Eighth Street, picks up that one precinct where I think one of the current county commissioners lived. And then District three on the north end picks up Pinos Altos, but does not go into the northern part of Silver City proper. When looking at Silver City itself... When looking at Silver City itself, you'll notice that three does come into, it comes into a nice corner within Silver City. It's a little bit more compact within the city than it was in Plan A. Comes into about Eighth and Cooper, it's Precinct Eighteen. District five, again, is a really nice, compact district, and it comes down to Highway 180 between Little Walnut Road and Pinos Altos Road. District one is the same as in Plan A, so it does go to Santa Rita College and down to Broadway, so it's the same. It's a little more compact within Silver City than Plan A. Okay, within the Santa Clara, Bayard, Hurley areas, the same as Plan A, and the same pretty much as what you have today. I'm going to go back to the previous map real quick. One thing when I talked about, these plans aren't necessarily set in stone. If you wanted to make a change or two, you certainly can. With respect to District three, let's say you wanted to put a little bit more Silver City in the District three, it could take Precinct Twenty, which is basically south of Eighth. See that right there? And that's a little bit more Silver City, more of that neighborhood. And you could bring that into District three, out of District four, and District four would end up, I'm going to do it one more time, actually swapping, and District four would come in and take some of this more rural area of Grant County. So three would come into Silver City a little bit more, four would expand way out and pick up the rural area. So it's a swap of precincts, one precinct for about three. That one precinct has about eleven-hundred people in south of Eighth Street. So that's something if you'd like to be, but you wanted to put a little more Silver City in the District three, that you certainly could. Okay, the numbers for, with respect to this percent Hispanic are the same as Plan A. Districts one and two are adult majority Hispanic. Okay, Plan C is a little bit different than what we've seen before. I just wanted to try something that you hadn't seen in the previous two plans. District three, in this particular plan, is, again, the northern, southern, western parts of the county, it does come into Silver City from the south, as before it came in kind of from the west, this kind of time it wraps around from the south. District two is a little bit different, in that it now goes up to Heelah Hot Springs. It's more, it takes more of the eastern part of the county. So that's a little bit of a change for District two. And I'll talk about District one in just a moment. There are still three compact districts in the middle of the county. So this is the Silver City, Bayard, Hurley, Santa Clara area. District one moved more, I want to say, out of the heart of Silver City. Before, it was, it was still kind of, had a decent sized chunk of Silver City proper, or the heart of it. And so loses Silver City, but in order to make up for the population that it lost, it actually has to move east a little bit and add a part of Bayard. So Bayard in this plan is split between Districts one and two. So that might be one, if you wanted to call it, one advantage of this one is that Silver City is really more, almost has three districts primarily, but one disadvantage would be that Bayard with respect to District one and two is split between two districts. So it's kind of that trade-off between the two types of plans and the communities of interest that we talked about earlier. District five has Pinos Altos, and it goes west, south of Bear Creek, north of Highway 180, into about Flaming, I guess that's Fork Road. District four is a little bit different. This one, when we get to Silver City map, you'll see, it may not look that compact, but that's also a function of the shape of the precinct. That little part of District four, not that little, that big part of District four is a big area, there's not many people in there, but that's just part of one precinct that goes into Silver City. So by not splitting the precinct, it does make the districts look a little bit funny, but it's still, from a compactness issue, legal issues, it's still fine. District three, as I said, is a more rural district, and it does come up and includes Silver Acres, it does come into Silver City, and also includes Tyrone, District three does. Within Silver City itself, District three, as I mentioned, does come into Silver City from the south up to Highway 180, and that's Cooper between Districts three and four. District four starts roughly on the north end at Rocky Creek Road, comes down between Swan and Pinos Altos, and then there's south of Highway D along Mountain View. Like I said, between three and four is Cooper, and four continues between Cooper and the San, the San Te Oro, down to about Silver Acres, but not including Silver Acres. District five goes into Silver City to about Swan and 180. So you'll notice that one precinct within District four that stands way down, it really, it ends in Silver City at, I want to say, you know, roughly, I think it's College or So it's a really long, tall, narrow precinct, with a vast majority of populations within Silver City. In terms of the Santa Clara, Bayard, Hurley area, this is, I guess, the one major change between what we've seen before. District one does extend east and picks up Bayard on the, I guess, west side of Highway 180. The other side of Bayard, Bayard on the north and east side is in District two. So District two lost part of Bayard, but again, it moved north and went into the Heelah Hot Springs, so there's that swap of population, which is District two, it lost population in Bayard, picked up population in the northern part of the county. In terms of the percent Hispanic, this one's a little bit different too. Districts, this one actually has three adult majority Hispanic districts. Districts one, two, and four, they have fifty-five, fifty-four, and fifty-six percent. There's three of them, which is fine, you know, the two plans, there's two. We're not trying to maximize, we're not trying to maximize the percent Hispanic, we're just trying to give the Hispanic population an opportunity to elect, to candidate of their choice between A, B, and C. They all do that. And that is the end of the presentation. Hopefully, you've gotten some decent information, and if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to let me know. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions today for Mr. Sharp?
Well, it was difficult to see this, okay? So it's going to take me some time to look at the actual map. I couldn't read any of the numbers, any of the, as far as the information that's given us, as far as the different districts and stuff, so it's going to take me some time to look at the actual maps and see which one was better. I understand your basis constitutionally and everything, and using that then plug in which one we prefer, right? The four corners of the table.
Right, right. Well, thank you very much for all your hard work, you know, it's always good to see the breakdown. You know, when the two campaigns that I've ran, people have asked me, is there any way to have two commissioners at large? And I guess you answered that question for us a bit ago. There's not, correct?
Yeah, I don't think the statutes allow commissioners to have three single member at two at large.
Okay. And that's just a question I did have, and you did answer that earlier, so I appreciate that, but that is what constituents had asked, so that's why I was asking. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike, for coming. Just to let the audience know, and the people on Katz, this is the very genesis of this There's no, nothing set in stone yet, and out of all the things that county commissions get to do, the minority is protected more in this situation than any other situation when it comes to a county commission. As we move along through the process of trying to decide whether to go to five-person commission or not, at any time, any one commissioner can stop it. It takes a, no, not a majority, it takes unanimous vote to move to this. So as we, as we move along, I have a question. So you kept saying these are kind of moving targets. If we choose and we say, hey, you know, this precinct, yeah, it fits contiguous, but we say, this one, like I said, you have to, like you had Heelah Hot Springs in with Cliff once. That's about as far away from each other as you can get by road, even though they're very close on the map. But when you start driving there, you're talking three and a half hours. If we decide to move a precinct and try to add something to move around, we can submit those and still make sure that it meets the qualifications of the five or four rules?
Yes, sir, we can certainly take a look at it, and then you come back and say, yeah, or no, in terms of whether or not, I reckon that explain one.
Okay. Mike, I think all of us just barely got to, I got it yesterday, I think. Maybe I got it over the weekend. I didn't look, I was kind of tired. So I think this is a good start, and we'll start working through these meetings. How many public meetings do we need to have once we kind of get going? What's optimal?
What we stand, what we have done, standard number of meetings, and you can go above or below this, and there's no requirement with respect to having more or less, but we like to say three, only because the first meeting, we introduce the plans, the second meeting, and if there's any input in that first meeting in terms of changing the plans, then at the second meeting, we can come back and provide or produce the modified plans and gather further input. And then sometimes by the third meeting, the county commission is ready to go. But it doesn't mean you can't take a fourth meeting. I mean, you may want to say, well, geez, the meeting after this is one where you really want to get into the nuts and bolts and nitty-gritty and offer suggestions. And, but usually by the third one, you're fine, you're ready to go and adopt, but if you want to go to a fourth or fifth, that's perfectly acceptable as well.
Well, this is a big, bold change, and I don't want to rush into anything. I want plenty of input, I want a lot of input for Rob, because it would be important to know how much time he's going to need after, after, if we choose to go this direction, to let voters know and what those procedures are. Do you have any input on that, Rob?
I think as long as we're, you know, Michael tried to not split any precincts.
I think if we don't split any precincts anywhere, our office is fine, you know, with the, you know, at least by February to get voters out their new cards, you know, because March will be the deadline to get this done for the election, to sign up for.
February of next year.
February of next year. Yeah, so we still got a little bit of, you know, but as long as, you know, my preference, you know, Michael said, was not to split any precincts, that would be, I mean, it would make our life a lot simpler in our office, not to have to.
Overall, that makes me.
Thank you.
And I know that people are probably asking, why are you all looking at this? And I believe every forum that I was in when I was running for office, this question always came up. And we always told people that we look at it, so now we're giving it a good look, and it don't necessarily mean that we're going to support it, it just means that we're definitely looking at it.
Just one last thing from me. One of the people I talked to, all of them I talked to was for it. You know, I'm sure there are people out there that may not like it, but they were concerned about having representation on the Two Rivers, the members in the Heelah. And that was, most of the people I talked to, that was their concern, is that they just didn't feel the rivers had the representation that they should.
I think I can answer that from looking at your maps. They don't have the population to probably have their own representation. That being said, would it be possible for you to forward to Charlene the population of each precinct?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Michael? Anybody else? You guys?
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
That being said, we'll move into, I've written all over my notes now, we'll move into the review of March 26, 2015, regular meeting agenda. Charlene, you want to go through that?
Uh, the first item, approval of the minutes. Next, the financial reports, the March 23, 2015 expenditure report, Linda.
Thank you, commissioners, members of the board, Charlene. This packet for the expenditure report approval that you have in front of you is for the dates of February 24 through March 23. And in this packet is AP checks, accounts payable checks totaling $1,601,266.33. In that total, there was a check in the amount of $13,893.12 for the December and January inmate fees. There was a check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $64,873.05 for the January tipping fees. There was a check in the amount of $46,846 to Pete's Business Repairs for the Fire UTV for Pinos Altos Guard Department. A check in the amount of $91,086.32 to Heelah Regional Medical Center for the January and February inmate care. A check in the amount of $53,495.19 to Architectural Workshop, and this is for Task One, Two, and Three of the Grant County Veterans Memorial Business Conference Center renovations. There was a check in the amount of $49,500 to Malloy Dodge for a 2014 police truck. A check in the amount of $51,809 to Pete's Equipment Repair. This was for repairs on a pumper at the Santa Rita Fire Department Station. There was a check in the amount of $20,115.69 to Ascent Aviation Group. This was for jet fuel and the lease payment on the jet fueler. There was a check in the amount of $14,545.20 to HCP Systems, and this was for the March 2015 Medical Management Services. And a check in the amount of $20,906.50 to Wright Express for the February fuel charges for the fleet. So the total AP checks again were $1,601,266.33, and this also And this also includes payroll check reporting for pay periods number five and number six. Pay period number five was $203,461.42. Pay period six was $199,607.58, for a total of $403.69 for payroll checks. So between the AP checks and payroll, the grand total is $2,435.33.
And also, we didn't place a cash flow analysis on this agenda. Linda and I are looking at that. We're not completely 100% satisfied that that's depicting the actual current picture, so we're gonna look at that and maybe revise that before we put it back on the agenda for.
It probably will not be here on Thursday, but we will have it for the April meeting.
Okay. Let's go down to your business.
Your business, under item C, actually, I'll split this into two items, since they are two separate proclamations listed on the agenda as proclamation recognizing Cobre and Silver State Champion Wrestling Team. It is two separate proclamations, one for Cobre High School Wrestling Team and one for Silver High Wrestling Team, recognizing their achievements at the state level. So your agenda will reflect that, that's two separate items. Moving on to item D, in your packet is proclamation recognizing the Cliff High School State Champion Basketball Team. We have a lot of proclamations this month. Next proclamation is item E. This is declaring April as Fair Housing Month. This is a request from Kim Clark with the Association of Realtors declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Grant County. Next proclamation is recognizing April 10 through the 12, 2015, as Continental Divide Trail Days. That proclamation is in there. You should also, should have been sent just a little pamphlet with some information on it. I don't see it in this packet, but I can get that to you before Thursday. But the proclamation does a good job of explaining what they're doing. Item G, we will remove, he had placed this commission date on his request. He actually wants to do that in April, so we will remove the give grandly, give local proclamation to the April.
Grandly?
Grandly.
Grandly?
So we will move that to the April meeting. We will have a new item, item H, which is a proclamation declaring April 1, 2015, as Start by the Leading Day, which was submitted by the Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services in regards to victims of sexual violence. That will be a new item. Next item on the agenda was a request to discuss the implementation of an airport advisory board. I've left a message for him to discuss this prior to him coming before the entire board, but they have requested to create an airport advisory board. Justin Ratty and I have already talked about this and once the airport action plan is complete, that we think this is a good idea. There's a tremendous amount of knowledge within the Grant County Pilots Association and we think that it would be quite helpful to all of us, since we're all new to running an airport and the fuel business and et cetera, et cetera, that this could be beneficial.
So this would just be a citizens group that we would appoint to give you input on what's going on at the airport?
Similar to, like, just an advisory committee.
Shooting board and the.
Exactly.
Okay. Have we not had that in the past?
Not that I know of. No one has seemed to. So this would be, this would be anything, and he wishes to discuss that with you. Next item is a presentation from the Members Valley Health Action League. They just want to talk about the projects that they've completed over the last year. Some of those include commodities, farmers market, school greenhouse, festivals in the Item K is a presentation from the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition regarding the start of a youth council in Grant County. The last time Raz was here, she discussed that with you. I think we actually approved a resolution in support of that, so she's gonna discuss that with you and the progress she's made thus far. Item L would be approve or disapprove the 2015 Law Enforcement Protection Fund application. These are funds for the Sheriff's Office that we receive annually. You get a $600 per certified officer plus, based on your census, your 2010 census population, you get a base amount plus the amount for each certified officer. Our total application is $42,800 and there are stipulations in statute as to what this can be used for. We primarily use it for training and purchase of equipment. Next item, M, approve/disapprove volunteer firefighters annual reporting to the New Mexico Public Employees Retirement Association. This would be for all fire departments. This is required to be submitted annually and is also required to be approved by the county commission and signed by the chairman. We now to contracts and agreements. Item N would be approve/disapprove agreement A 15-07 between the Department of Cultural Affairs Fund Capital Appropriation and a County of Grant on behalf of the Hila Valley Library. This is a grant agreement in the amount of, they would receive $6,229.46. This can be used to purchase equipment, supplemental library resource acquisitions, including prints, nonprints, and electronic resources. No questions so far? We announce resolutions. Item O, approve/disapprove resolution R 15-08, 2015 Certified Mileage for County Maintain Roads. This is an annual requirement that the county submit the number of maintained miles. They have come up with a total of 695.20 miles. It included additions of the Kneeling Nun Road of .66 miles and the addition of Miners' Legend Road of .21 miles, bringing the total to 695.2. Earl, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just real quick, I know that you said enough, but the state thinks we own all the roads in Fort Bear. So we've been fighting over that for the last 45 days or so. I think they think that we ought to maintain them, is what they think.
So would you?
That's a wish. They all can do it in spare time.
Nice question. Any other questions or comments on that? The next item is approve/disapprove resolution R 15-09, 2015 Budget Adjustments. I'll let Linda explain the bulk of this.
Thank you, Charlene, commissioners, members of the board. There will be several budget adjustments in this resolution, and I'll begin with the general fund. There'll be a cash transfer into the general fund in the amount of $50,027.32. This is actually coming in from the North Hurley Wastewater System. It was for engineering fees that were paid from the general fund at the beginning of the project. In the road fund, we will have a cash transfer in the amount of $173.22. This is coming in from temporary budget adjustments that we had done years ago. One of them is on the Corral Canyon Assessment District, and we'll be transferring out $10,122 out of there into the road fund. In Fund 535-7E, we have an '07 ALG at the Civic Center, which is now the Veterans Memorial Business Conference Center. It's very grant that we received back in '07. We'll transfer out $66,731 from there, and we will also transfer $10,000 out of Phase 2 of the same project. And these are grants that are now closed. We will also be transferring $100 from the 2012 Grant County Coalition and $31,211 from the 2013 Grant County Coalition. We no longer have that coalition in which Grant County and the town of Silver City were paying for this. I guess it was a board that was working on economic development, if I understand that correctly. And so we're transferring that money into the road fund. These are no longer in existence. The next cash transfer that I have is $2,081 into the Fort Bear Fire Department from the EMS funds, Fort Bear EMS funds, and this was also for medical equipment that was purchased. Then we have a transfer of $3,000 from the largest tax into the 2015 Tourism Grant, and that's the cash match that is required for that grant. We are transferring out $54,058 from the 2007 HIDA grant that is, has been closed and is no longer in existence, and that is also going into the road fund. And we will be transferring $125,618.32 from the North Hurley Wastewater System. $50,027 of it goes into the general fund, and $75,591 will go into a reserve fund into this North Hurley Wastewater System that is required according to the bonds. We will be transferring, okay, that covers the transfer. Now, we will also be increasing revenue into, let me see, the 2015 Tourism Grant. We're gonna increase revenue by $3,000 and increase expenditures in that grant. We will be increasing revenue and expenses for the Senior Services Meal Equipment Grant that was just approved. We will be increasing revenue and expenditures in the amount of $100,000 for the Upper Ambus Fire Department Rural Fire Assistance Grant, and this is to purchase a fire truck. We'll be increasing revenue and expenditures in the amount of $225,000. Excuse me. This is for the Grant County Admin Building Renovations. This is the ALG appropriation that we just received. We will also be increasing revenue and expenses in the amount of $150,000, and this is for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial Improvements, and this is also an ALG that we just received. There will be a decrease in revenue in the EMS funds of $2,715, and at the same time, increase expenditures of $2,081, and also decrease expenditures of $2,714, and do a budget transfer of $81,332 from the Fire Access Tax into the EMS funds. Excuse me. And this is all to reflect the actual amounts of revenue and expenses that were approved under the EMS funds. And then we will do increased revenue and expenses in the amount of $50,171.52, and this is for the 2014 Homeland Security Grant, and this is to purchase emergency equipment through emergency management. We will also increase expenditures in the amount of $75,591, and this is for that reserve fund that we're doing the cash transfer into for the wastewater system. There's also an increase in revenue and expenses in the amount of $5,748 for the 2013 Community DWI Grant, and we will increase revenue and expenses in the amount of $1,080,958.50. And this is for the 2015 Cuarecaminos Grants for the admin operating and capital outlet that was awarded to them. And that's it. If you have any questions for me.
Well, Linda, first, last, this appears to just be cleaning up a lot of the funds that were left over. Is that basically what you're doing here?
Yes.
Other than the new ones, the, like, fire truck and stuff?
Correct. That's what the cash.
That's what it's like to me.
Yes.
I'm seeing things stand out there, so.
The bulk of this is the transfer into the road department was as a result of the security role schools funding that was cut by our federal government. We only received about a quarter of that, and it was actually budgeted for, which is put the road department in.
Schools this year, and it didn't come through.
Didn't come through, so.
Tighten, tighten, nope, tighten your belt. You're gonna have to start living on boiled chicken down there at the road department.
Any further questions or comments on that?
Well, I mean, one quick comment is that, you know, people question why we passed that grocery seed. Well, you know, that's why we're getting cut here and there every time we turn our heads, and that's why we did it, so.
We got 25% of what we thought we were supposed to. We have concerns about that in the belt. So belt hill's something funded this year.
We can't depend on them, and we've got to adjust what we've got coming in and adjust what we spend so we can hope to handle it.
Okay. Will everybody go through those adjustments and make sure you're good with them before Thursday? We'll move on to the ordinance.
We are on item Q. This is approve/disapprove resolution R 15-10. This is an intent to adopt an ordinance regarding increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section 7 of the New Mexico Constitution. This would actually be the first step required to move forward with the redistricting that Mr. Sharp just presented. This would be the resolution approving the notice of intent to adopt the ordinance.
That's just saying, we are giving you notice, we're thinking about this.
Correct.
We still can vote no at the end.
Yes. Claims Board, yes, sir. Item R, approve/disapprove health plan claims from the Indigent Fund for February, through February 28, 2015. There is a total of 68 claims and a total of $60,452.6. And you also have item S, approve/disapprove, March 12, 2015, Indigent burial certificate for Tarazza's Funeral Chapels.
That includes a new one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to resume? Motion to resume. Second, all those papers, second, five, say no. Take five minutes. Eight, call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, March 24, 2015. This is a work session, and at this point in time, we're gonna stand for county reports. And I always let my favorite hospital administrator go first, but prior to letting you go first, I was remiss in not introducing the senator this morning. Welcome, Senator. Thanks for coming to our meeting today. Do you have any quick comments, or?
Thank you, and it's good to see you, everybody. I'm actually, I was supposed to be up and then that, you know, that's certainly happened in the next week, but good to see you, everybody.
Let's make sure the senator gets whatever time he needs on our April 23. Okay, there you go, now run.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have several short updates for you all. First, let's start out with finances, and then just as a reminder, finances, we're back two months, and so these are January financials. We'll be doing February financials. We'll be doing February financials this Friday with our board, and then updating you all from there. But as of the end of January, we had a one-point-one million dollar bottom line and a hundred and thirty-six days in cash, so hospitals still sitting solid financially. Just a quick update on our family practice. We were updating you, we partnered with Dr. Stanley and Cindy Moreno, who's a nurse practitioner, and that practice opened up on March second. And after just a couple of weeks, we're at ninety percent capacity. This is a really important partnership from Gila Regional's perspective with regards to the Affordable Care Act provisions that are coming forward. So this is not just a partnership with a physician, this is a very strategic partnership for Gila Regional's future. We also had an open house on March eleventh, and we had about a hundred people from the community come out to see the practice, so we appreciate that. Just a quick update, we're in the middle of an RFP process with our cancer center providers, and wanted to just let you know that. We're moving forward, our intent is to contract once again with New Mexico Hematology and Oncology Consultants. That's the group that we've been working with, with Dr. McInnany for many years. We're very happy with the service they provide, but just as you know, we, our procurement process requires us to RFP something like that every four years. So if you hear in the community that what's going on with our cancer center, we're just in the next contracting process. As a reminder, we're also moving forward with continued dialogues with our board about our growing physician practice and utilizing a model with setting them up as limited liability companies, and we brought that up last month. I just wanted you to know we're having further discussion with our board this month, and in the next month or so, we'll, we'll come to a decision on that. I just want to keep that on your radar. Foundation's holding our annual golf tournament, and that's on June thirty-first, and we're, we're looking for teams. And so if you're interested, please call Holly Hudgens, and she'll connect you with the appropriate foundation member to get you connected with that process. Foundation raises money, critical in these days to help the hospital with pieces of equipment that we may need. So thank you for that.
That is June thirty-third?
That is June thirty-first, yes. Thirteenth, thank you. June thirteenth is the golf tournament. Thank you for that correction.
June thirteenth?
Yes. Want to just thank, you know, a few people. Senator Morales and Rudy Martinez helped put together Mental Health Task Force, looking at the transition, the if and when La Frontera leaves our community. Commissioner Hall was attending at these meetings, and several other representatives from the community, looking at making sure that we have all the pieces in place to make for a smooth transition. So appreciate Senator Morales and Rudy Martinez setting that up. And HMS turns out is stepping further forward to be in a more supportive role going forward. I think that's going to really help with this transition, and more information to come on that. I want to thank the Commission for appointing Dr. Wachuku as our physician member to our board last month. You know, we all know Dr. Wachuku very well. He was our Chief of Staff for several years, so he steps right into his board role, very aware of what's going on at Gila Regional, and we thank you for that. Last item on my agenda is just a brief discussion about the past legislative session. As you guys know, and you were there for, for much of it, our role was tracking, monitoring bills that impact Gila Regional and our community. And we have, obviously, Senator Morales as a point person for that. We have Susie Trujillo up there serving as a liaison, helping. Most notably, we were tracking Senate Bill One Seventeen, which would have sunset the county's One Twelve obligation for the Safety Net Care Pool. New Mexico Hospital Association was a strong supporter of that. Gila Regional chose to stand with our county in, in opposition, and as we know, that died on the House floor and.
It was never going to hear that. We got word from the fourth floor that it wasn't going to go, so the Republican majority in the House chose not to even hear it, so.
Even though it passed every committee with by far more than a majority. Yes, and, you know, we followed that one closely, and as I said, we departed from the Hospital Association on that one, stood with our county. And obviously, I know Senator Morales will be speaking further at the next meeting, but I just wanted to take this opportunity as we close out on this legislative session discussion. Did we have any other questions related to county or hospital bills that we wanted to clarify on?
I don't know, because I lived it.
Okay. Can I say anything for questions?
Maybe these guys do, I don't know. Question, Dr. Brian?
Not excited about the family practice?
Yes.
I think it's a great program, and I think it's routing out your hospital to where, you know, citizens can walk in there, and they've got everything they need. I just really like what I see. I've been spending quite a bit of time out there the last week, and so, with a friend, and, and I'm just so impressed from your, from your people, your janitors, what do you call them now, to the, to the doctors and stuff, I just, I mean, a, a person that just does the janitorial work, walked by and saw a person standing in the room, first thing I know, he shows up with a chair. I go, wow. I mean, that's responsive. Everyone feels like they're part of the team, I felt like.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. Sometimes people refer to Gila Regional as some entity, I'm not sure what they're referring to, but Gila Regional is made up of this community. It's our brothers and sisters and mothers and fathers, so when you come in there, you can rest assured people are going to be looking to help you.
Thank you.
Yes, and as far as the family practice, I'll just throw out some big thanks. Dan Otero's here, he's our Chief Administrative Officer. He was the lead on that project and all of our physician projects, and to pull that together in three months, our family practice with Dr. Stanley, was really unprecedented. Tamara Honor, so many other people involved in that project across our organization, our board, and so I just wanted to thank everybody for that.
I'll go get my physical, and then go have a good lunch.
You got it.
Just thanks to you, we did have a, a meeting at WNMU this, this, actually, yesterday, and Gila Regional's name came up quite a bit, and what we're doing is we, we met with the Fire Chiefs Association Chairman, we met with the Forest Service, we met with the Silver City Fire Department, who were, were trying to get some classes over at WNMU, but we're, for Fireman One Training. But where, where your name came up, where Gila Regional came up, was we're going to start, we're going to try and get them to start CPR, EMT One classes and paramedic classes, but hopefully we can collaborate and maybe work together and get some of this done, especially when it comes to grants and what have you.
Look forward to that discussion, sir.
I'd be impressed if I didn't mention that task force from the Department, and I appreciate what the Senator did and what Rudy is doing. And it was amazing how, you know, this is a crisis. I mean, they step out, people, a lot of people don't realize what a crisis this is, is that it, it can be very dangerous, not only for families, but the patients themselves and, and, you know, and the public. So it was, it was, it was rewarding to sit there in that meeting and, and, and listen to the different entities stepping forward, and already their tasks are many, saying, we'll do this. So that was rewarding to see that we have a lot of people out there that think about the community as a whole.
I agree.
Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Thanks for coming, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Okay. Hey, Margaret, you want, you ready?
Before you start, congratulations on the appointment of your daughter.
Thank you, thank you, I'm very proud of her. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager and others, I wanted to give a report on our surveillance program, specifically on the adult program and juvenile program. Just year-to-date referrals, I'm going to highlight, I'm going to go over each month, and then I'll go over the adult next. So in January, we had a total of thirty-nine kids being surveilled. Six of them were informal, twenty-two were formal. That means formal were adjudicated. February, we had four informal, and eighteen formal, and one courtesy. In March, and that's of this year, 2015. Our highest month was back in August. Start of fiscal year for fourteen, fifteen, in July, we had a total of thirty-five, twenty-six formal and seven informal. In August, we had twenty-five formal and twelve informal. In September, we had twelve informal and twenty-one formal and three courtesy. In October, we had twenty formal and six informal. In November, we had six informal and twenty formal, and in December, we had twenty-two formal and six informal. So as you can see, juvenile rates of formal adjudicated youth are really low, and I think it's because of our forefront programming at JPO. I think it's made a big difference. However, they're utilizing the GPS like we wanted them to. So this year, you're going to see an increase in the GPS costs versus detention costs, in my opinion. So for the GPS bracelets, starting last year, July, we had a total of seven kids on GPS. Total number of days were eighty-four days. In August, we had five kids, total of fifty-nine duration of the days on the bracelet. In September, we had seven kids, duration of days was a hundred and twenty-three. In October, we had seven kids, duration of days was eighty-two. And in November, we had four kids, duration of days was sixty-eight. In December, we had six kids, duration of days was eighty. And in January, we had eleven kids on GPS, total duration of days was two oh two. And in February, we had eight kids with the duration of days of a hundred and fifteen. So total kids was fifty-five for the, from July last year to date. At the cost of a hundred and five per day per child, if we did detain the fifteen formal clients, an average of nineteen days would have been twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any questions on juveniles?
Don't think I have, but I should actually have a copy of May. Sure, can you share that with us? You give it to Denise, she'll make a copy for, for me. And, you know, anytime we can, GPS keep the child out of, out of detention and in, in programs and such, that's a win-win. Plus, you know, economically, big GPS versus detention costs, Mike is over there granting. So good job.
Any further questions?
Okay, onto the adults. We started a program last July with magistrate court, and it's been very successful. We asked the county to fund most of it, and this is in collaboration with magistrate court, district court, and then, of course, we're working with the county and the city to reduce the number of detainees in the jail. So we had seventeen referrals. Total fifteen were from magistrate court, and two were from district court. We have actively four clients in the program. So what happens is they get a referral to the surveillance program. There's a criteria that we've met with Judge Laney about, they get referred. If they're bound over to district court, still on conditions of release, it's up to the district court judge to continue them on the GPS. And in turn, they're paying a fee. The Town of Silver City is our fiscal for that, and we turn around and use that money to pay for urinalysis, another cost related to the program. And so it's been really successful. It's been able to pay for more surveillance officers, but also to keep these people out of jail, and, and we really are surveillancing them with the GPS cost as well. Are there any questions on that program? Again, when you look at your budget, I'd like you to consider refunding this program.
You're saving the money this year.
I'm not going to ask for an increase, but I'm just asking you to continue with the same amount for.
I mean, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for roads is sure helpful.
Any questions?
No, no, no answer to that?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time answering it myself. Thank you very much.
We will try very hard. Budget meetings will start in first of May, end of April.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mike? Mike needs a mic. Mike, 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 Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Committee Members. I respectfully submit my report for February twenty-first to March eighteenth. The detention facility, item number one, status remains the same. Item number two, detention facility filled its existing vacancy on March the sixteenth. We will have representatives at Golf Park on Wednesday, April fourth, in support of Start by Believing and Paint the Town Teal, and this is all in support of the Sexual Awareness Program, Sexual Awareness Month. We're all going to be participating in that, so we will be at Golf Park to support them with that. Item number three, the status remains the same. On the training update, for this reporting period, our newly hired applicant is undergoing the FTO program. We do have Lieutenant Gary attended, the New Mexico Association of Counties Crisis Intervention Training this week, and we will be sending two sergeants next month to the same training. Item number five, the inmate support program. The program is progressing through the legislative process this time, and I'd like to thank Senator Morales for all the support that he gave to this program and that he continues to support the inmate support program. Thank you, Senator, for that. Item number six, our recognition and reward program. We're accepting nominations right now for Employee of the Month. Detention statistics, our average daily population for the reporting period is fifty-nine, which is three less than last month. The high population males is fifty-six, five less than last month. High population females is twelve, three less than last month. And for this reporting period, we had fifty-nine inmates, we're three less than last month for reporting period of the facility, and this shows a slight decrease in activity. The average length of stay for this reporting period is eight-point-one-eight days. The inmate population statistics, and this is a, a new stat that I threw in there for you, on three-eighteen, there are forty-nine adult males and twelve adult females incarcerated in the facility. And right now, the recidivism rate from January first to March of three-eighteen, we had twelve individuals, twelve inmates that are re-offended in that three-month period. So recidivism, again, if you can see, is alive and well. Monthly agency statistics, SCPD had fifty-six arrests, New Mexico State Police had two, Grant County SO had twenty-five, Santa Clara had five, Barrett had five, and Hurley PD had two. On our item number nine, the detention facility conducted fifteen district court transports. Division One, we had twenty. Division Two, there were seven. Municipal Court, Silver City, had eight. Santa Clara had zero, Barrett had zero. For the medical transports for this reporting period, we conducted seven medical transports, so the total number for the entire, for all the transports was at fifty-seven. On our utilization and occupancy levels, we had twenty-four felonies, fifty-five misdemeanors, for a total of hundred and, a hundred and one offenses. Total hours in custody is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight hours, and the sentencing show a decrease compared to last month. And have no other, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything.
No, I did, and I'm sitting here trying to run some figures real quick, if you'll bear with me. Yeah, because, I mean, our average population was fifty-nine, sixteen.
Yes, sir, and if, if you look at, over a three-month period, if you take that sixty, if you look at those sixty inmates, just on an average, you're looking at a hundred and eighty inmates, so we're probably looking at about eight percent, and then if you take it for the three-month period, you're looking at a twenty percent.
Yeah, seven, seven percent, so you're right on.
Yes, sir.
So, out of those twelve individuals, do you, do you keep anything on whether or not that was alcohol, drug-related?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, it is both. It is alcohol and drug-related, and I can tell you right now, you know, some of the inmates that we're getting in there right now are, they're, the substance abuse issue is extremely high in the facility right now, for those that are being incarcerated, that is the primary reason. Yes, sir.
Are we missing, are we missing something there? Yeah, I mean.
I think it's, it's.
Is, is Commissioner Hall's facility, is that going to, are we going to be able to use that for that gap that, for that resistance? Are we going to be able to slow that down? I don't know that you'll ever stop it.
That's the whole idea, is that what we're going to try to do is, rather than lock them, you know, hiring more police officers, more sheriff's deputies, more judges, more prisons and everything, let's address the problem. You know, it's, 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 we need to, we, we need to treat them. Now, certainly, it's not one
Now, certainly, it's not going to be all, but already, from the, from the needs assessment that we did, we found, talking to the sheriff's office, the police department, the courts, and also to Mike, is that almost everyone that is incarcerated or arrested, alcohol or drugs are involved. Now we have a brand-new drug on the scene that's really very dangerous, and we just have to address that, and enforcement is not always the answer.
What drug do we have?
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, commission members, also the two programs that we have, that we're putting together now, the inmate support program and also the detox program, both of them are addressing the recidivism issue. And I think in the program, both of those programs themselves, we have the graduated sanctions, which I think is going to help, to answer your question with the recidivism, is at the end of these programs and the graduated system, once an individual goes to these programs, there's also an after-care part of the program, which, once they're through with their addiction issues that we're trying to address, because addiction is lifelong, they're going to have to struggle with this for the rest of their life. But once they progress through that program, the after-care program then presents them with an opportunity for a career, an opportunity to be able to go on an educational track, an opportunity for some kind of an employment process that's also included in the program. Because what I'm seeing, sir, is when they get out of incarceration, they've been away from the drug, but when they get back on the streets, because they have no opportunity to help themselves, they regress and they get back into the same situation that got them there in the first place. To address, what I do, sir, is I go back to the inmates and I go into the facility with them and I gather intelligence and information from them, and they're quite honest. They tell me what drug they've been using, they tell me why they're having the issues they're having, they're telling me what their struggles are. So we put some programs in the facility to help address them with those issues and help to get them back on track. And to answer your question right now, we're, there's a national trend right now with heroin, and I've been keeping abreast with that. The heroin issue right now is, it's being mixed with a product called fentanyl. And right now, the national trend is that when they mix the fentanyl with the heroin, it then becomes 100% more powerful than meth, and is 50% more powerful than cocaine. And some of the inmates that I have seen come in this facility are, obviously, I don't have the information to tell you that that's what's happening now, but whatever, whatever they're taking right now is very powerful. And it's worse than I've seen in a long time.
I had not heard of that.
Yes, and there's some intelligence also that I've been gathering in Mexico as far as the feds that have been, have been trying to track some of the drug trade and stuff still coming up from the Mexican border.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thanks, Mike. Anthony?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We did submit the EDA grant application for the Business Conference Center. As I reported last time, we did request $750,000 in conversation. It may look like we may not qualify for that much money, but hopefully, we're looking at anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000. So that's a good chunk of change to assist in what we're trying to get to Business Conference Center. We're also looking, Ray's still working on the documentation he needs for the notice of public hearing for the assessment district on the Loma Verde subdivision. As soon as he gets done with that one, we're going to put him on the one for Wind Canyon. There's a lot of specifics in trying to get the information for the public hearing. Dory was a lot more familiar on what was necessary for that, and so Ray's kind of having to learn as he goes along, so it's taking him a little bit longer than anticipated. But we're hoping to have that by the commission meeting. I don't know if you're having two commission meetings in May, but if you are, that's probably the first one. The first one will be the public hearing. I also met with the AUSA Architects on the two, on the project that was mentioned earlier for the veterans, Baton Park, also for the courthouse, for the actual portion of the courthouse. They are going to give us a preliminary cost estimates on both, preliminary planning scope, and so hopefully, by the next time, we'll have something going on those also. We've been working on multiple requests for rights-of-way, right-of-way issues directly related to sales of property, where there's been development on right-of-way. And so, those are a little, some of them haven't been developed. For instance, we have the townships in San Lorenzo and in PA where we kind of inherited right-of-way from, I don't know if it's abolishment of their incorporation or what it was, but we're trying to work through those things. Also, we, Engineers Inc.'s currently working on some additional wastewater improvements for North Hurley. We had about $350,000 left from the appropriation from USDA. We wanted to utilize all the monies, and so there's about 10 more residences that are being put on the system, that weren't currently on the system, maybe 10, maybe 12. That doesn't include the ones down further towards the tri-city area, but there were some residences in the small township right there that are being added on, plus a solar assistance for our power to the facility itself, to the workstation itself. Also, the North Hurley Engineering Plan is complete, the colonias project that we had done for the roads from North Hurley. And, of course, we did make an application for construction monies also, but I haven't heard anything back from that. Of course, the EWSA, the Hill San Francisco Water Commission has a meeting today at 1:00. And we're going to discuss the potential JPA with, excuse me, with the Interstate Stream Commission on becoming the cap entity. So we'll probably have to bring that JPA to the commission at some point, as the commission, as Grant County, would actually be a member of the joint powers agreement. Instead of the transitioning the Hill San Francisco over into the cap entity, it's going to be a sole and separate entity. And I know that there's kind of been some shots at the road department and the struggle that they're having with their budget, but I've been trying to do an assessment, a payment assessment. And I do want to inform the commission that our paved roads are not only becoming a maintenance issue, but the structural integrity of our road is really, really failing. And that means full construction of a lot of our paved roads. And so, that's a huge, huge, huge cost differential between trying to maintain a road and trying to repair it and full construction. So I think that Earl, although he's really struggling, there's a huge issue that we have with our paved roads. And so, anytime we have an opportunity for capital investment, I think that we may need to start looking at our road waste.
And just to be perfectly clear, those came across, the shots at the road department, they were not intended as that. They were strictly intended to the federal government to be shots to them.
Well, and we understand that. The bad thing about it is that we've taken a look at the state also, and the money generated from the state and from the feds just isn't coming. And so, the only investment that I see is going to have to come from our county, and so we may have to take a look at something. It's getting pretty serious, the roads are falling apart.
I mean, look at North Hurley Road, look at the little paved road we were on last week in Hanover. I mean, yeah, that's all.
And I think that we, I think that we, we kind of structured the road department to be able to do those full construction projects. We just need the capital for the materials. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We start patching on our LGF projects today, and we've been hauling in chips for the Chips Hill projects. We'll be working on that for the next couple of months, where we can start getting going in June and get all that stuff done.
Earl, I can't hear you.
How about now? And we got that road built in, that new road built into the Hanover Cemetery. We're going to pour that low water crossing tomorrow. I did meet with Tom Head out there, and he looked at it, and he wants to go ahead, the mine wants to go ahead and put a fence on both sides of that road to keep people from driving up and down that canyon. So we'll have all of our part done, we'll just be waiting on them to get that fence in before we open that thing up to the public. It'll come out real nice.
Are we going to close the area?
Yeah, they're going to leave the parking lot open for the people to park on the other side, the same parking lot that they had, but they'll close the road right there at the entrance to the parking lot. And it'll be closed down.
And we'll begin laden inside the cemetery also, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's some very excited people out there to see that. I've been getting a lot of comments of different, going to different meetings, and they're excited to see that road looking so good.
Yeah, it's a lot better road than what the other road was.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Thank you, I'll get it.
Okay, thanks, Earl. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll start real quick with the fire. We've had several small fires in Grant County already, so as you know, people think we get a lot of moisture and so forth, but it's just drying up the fine fuels. We had one Saturday, it was on private property, lightning strike, but we were able to get to it real quick. So just letting everybody know to be cautious. We had no structures burning, the fires that we had. We helped out Tyrone, helped out Silver City on Cooper Street and 90 a couple of weeks back. We're getting through all of our training with the VFDs. I am going to have Gabe Hogan here on Thursday, and he'll give us a perspective on where the Forest Service sees. Well, I think what he likes to do is come and the public input, yes, just to give what their perspective is going forward this year with the weather and so forth and so on. So he'll be here for that. Public Works, we'll go to Public Works Airport real quick, finish the pilot's loans, that's all done. So get a chance, we'd like to get you guys out there, if you'd like to go out, obviously, individually or, you know, together, whatever we have to do to do that. Currently going to RFP for consultants for the airport, going to need that. As you know, we're going to get the runway redone next year. So the action plan, we had our third meeting last week, and so there'll be a fourth, the Pilot's Association. We had it in the evening to get more public input. We had some good public input, and so we're moving forward with them on that. We recently had the environmental inspectors come for the fuel farm, past that, so no issues with that. Phil 66 will be down to inspect, to do their fuel inspection on the 26th, which is Thursday, so we'll have that done. We'll be receiving the abgas refueller this week as well, that was requested by Forest Service as they get ready to start their fire season and put some seats on their airport. And so, we're looking to get that done. That'll be here next Monday, I'm sorry. So with that, going Baton Park now, we're starting Baton Park cleaning up. We know a lot of activity out there now, the baseball season's starting, or has started, a lot of activity at the Fort Baird building out there as well. So we're just trying to keep the guys out there, keep them busy, making sure on weekends the trash is thrown. And I just want to encourage the public to respect the park, you know, don't damage it, you know, turning over those rail cars and stuff like that, that happens every year at this time. People, you know, it's a lot more, the weather's getting better and the days are getting longer, so people are out a lot longer. So I just ask the public to make sure that they respect our facilities. We're moving the, I know we had this conversation with the parks about the restrooms, we're getting those set, cemented in, and going to have some porta-potties put out there because of the issues we have with the existing ones we have. So hopefully, those will be done early next week, and we'll have those going. We're getting ready, the process for the summer, getting with our buildings, and because I know now people are going to be asking for cooler, the air conditioners to be put on, so we're going to jump on that a lot quicker than we have in the past, so hopefully, we can get those up, so when they're ready to use them, they're ready to go right then and there. We also plan on painting the parking lot lines at the courthouse, I know there's been some requests for that. Also, here at the administrative building, we're going to hopefully do that as well, according to Justin. I want to thank Justin, because he's done a lot of, you know, he's wearing several hats, obviously, like we all are, and he's putting a lot of time in at the Opera, but I want to make sure that we work together as a team, and he doesn't forget the other facilities that we have and the other duties that he has. So he's done a real good job, we work together, and making sure all these things get done. So we're also servicing all of our equipment for, you know, the summer months and the spring as we go forward with the weeders and the lawn mowers and all that. So we're just trying to get all of that done as we move forward. I do want to say, and my last thing, is the WUI conference, the Wildland Urban Interface Conference is coming April 8th and 9th. It'll be held at our Veterans Conference Center. I encourage the public to attend. That's all about fire safety and firewise communities. It's been held in Taos several years, in Rios Dos several years, they picked Grant County. I wish our conference center would be up to par, but obviously, it's not, but we're going to do the best job that we can. We look for about 180 participants, they're going to stay in our motels and eat at our restaurants, and it'll be a two-day conference. So I look forward, Chairman, you're on that agenda for reasons, so we'll have to work something. It's called a conference call, while you're on the golf course. So anyway...
I respectfully requested Charlene to ask the other commissioners if they could come and do a welcome for me in my place.
I brought that rope, my last one.
It always seems to be the good ones, Charlie.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board...
I'll keep that to you, I'm going around.
Okay, so, you know, just letting the public know, I think it's because they picked Silver City or Grant County for the fact of the fires we had, the Silver Fire, Signal Fire last year, the Quail Ridge Fire, there'll be some information on that, on some of the things we learned from that. Some of the communities, we do have a firewise community in Wind Canyon, they became officially a firewise community this year, so there'll be some people from that community also giving, you know, some speeches on that. We're going to go out and see some tinning projects that were done. The whole concept is, is that you have federal lands or state lands that butt up to private lands, and so if we can work on both sides of the fence, that's what firewise is, it just helps that fire break and something major coming into our community. So we're going to go out and look at a couple of projects that were done, both on public and private land, to show those what can be accomplished in. So one of them will be in the Pinos Altos area, and the other one will be up at Little Walnut, in the Little Walnut picnic ground area. So other than that, that's all I have, just trying to stay busy. I know that we put some information out to you, Mr. Chairman, about Cora Camino's, and we want to sit down and work with you on that, if we can.
No, no, no.
That is, that is not the case. I think what we're going to do is, we've done really good working to try to grab our arms around the transportation system and make it more efficient. And I think by doing that, we met a few times with the county manager, I'll thank her for her input on that, too. And so, we're trying to do some...
I guess the email I'm talking about is match for new buses or bus, or...
We have worked out a plan on that, and that's why we want to sit with you before we make that decision. And it won't require, I don't believe that it will require the county to put up any new matches.
Well, we're definitely here for some new buses, seeing the last days, see what we can do.
So I'm hearing he has some money, that's all.
So other than that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
No questions?
Well, one more thing, I do want to talk about what Gabe was saying at the university. So we are looking, we had a meeting last night with the rural fire chiefs, and we're supporting, we're all in full support of that, to have some curriculum at the university when it comes to fire, and so I want to thank you for hitting that up.
Yeah, the one thing on those buses that I did see is concern that the only vendor I saw was an out-of-state vendor, so they do understand we're going to have to probably put those out for bid. And I won't be for buying any more van body buses, they're too hard to work on, they're 130,000 mile vehicle. It's short-sighted to even think like that, even if we have to buy less, we need to go ahead and buy a bus with a truck chassis under it, to where you can have a 400,000 or 500,000 mile chassis.
And that's why we're giving the charge of course.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I guess that was why we reached out, so that we can be on the same page and make sure that we, you know, that we're getting the best thing for the public.
I bet you if you go down and talk to Earl's mechanics, they would tell you the same thing. same thing.
He has some experience with public transportation.
Oh, well. So, okay, I guess we'll move over to electives, and I see the sheriff snuck in, do you want Kevin to give that report, Sheriff? All right. Nice to see you, though.
I don't have a lot to report. We did do interviews on Friday, we're looking to hire another deputy here shortly to replace, I believe it would be Deputy Click's position that we're filling. And we are working on some possible programs to where we can attack our larceny and our burglary problems and hopefully be able to curb them. We'll never stop them, but we need to figure out who's doing them, and we're working on that and trying to make some plans. And other than that, don't have a lot to report unless you have questions.
And that guy in Albuquerque stopped that larceny last week pretty quick. It's the way it needs to be done, I guess. You don't have any questions for Sheriff? All right, thanks, Kevin, thanks, Sheriff, thanks for coming. Mr. Assessor.
Good morning. How's, just trying to, just trying to stay awake here, not just. Hey, County reports on March 24th.
I didn't know we were that boring, I'm sorry.
Now, County reports on March 24th, 2015, Grant County Work Session. First, I really would like to thank my staff, Misty Trujillo, she's our new senior appraiser, and Kerry Powell, she's actually the appraiser. The rendition period did great, Misty and Kerry and myself, we processed over 2,100 accounts, and on top of our normal duties like field visits, sales, racial analysis, and we are working close with the county treasurer on trying to clean up their manufactured home records. In three months, on our backlog of 600 deeds, I am so grateful that I have my chief deputy, Jennifer Barazza, with her expertise on parcel mapping. As of Monday, March 23rd, 2015, steps were taken. We contracted out our county, the retired county mapper to assist with the processing deeds, we utilized the chief deputy assessor, Jennifer Barazza, in assisting and processing these deeds, we also utilized the employees in the assessor's office on processing these deeds. We also contracted Grant County Title for assisting and helping us with these extensive title searches. Western New Mexico Title Company also has lent a hand. All of 2014 backlog deeds in the assessor's office have been processed. We are now starting the 2015 deeds and will be caught up with the backlog by the end of the year. We also are restructuring the assessor's office to avoid the situation of backlog transactions that we inherit in January 1, 2015. Taxation Revenue Division, Grant County, TRD has granted us an extension on our mail out, on our notices of valuation. At this moment, our target date's gonna be May 1st, and the assessor's office is really diligently working for that date. I would like to thank Grant County property owners for their patience and their confidence in the assessor's office. I, Charlene, that's pretty much all in the assessor's office, and we're just trying to get bodies in pretty soon. I asked the commission, if you would please, this month of April is gonna be Grant County Trail Month, okay? And we were, I have been working with the CDT Trails, and I ask you guys, please, come hike with us. I would really would like a representative of the county commissioners to show up for the Grant County Trail Days for 2015, that's April 10th, 11th, and 12th. It would be nice on Friday the 4th, I mean Friday at 4:00 PM at Luto, to represent Grant County. We do have a lot of big hitters from nationwide with this Grant County, County, County of the By Trails for 2015, so please, come hike with us, okay? Yeah, it's gonna be April 10th, 11th, and 12th, and I got you a flyer so you guys can actually take a look at it.
Can you hike any of the three days?
Yes, matter of fact, we do have, on April 12th, we do have a hike on Gomez Peak.
12th?
Yeah, it's gonna be April 12th on Sunday, and we've been conducting these once a month for the Grant County Trail Month.
What time do you kick off?
1 o'clock.
1?
Yes, and this is gonna be a little bit of a hard hike, it's gonna be about four miles, and it's a little strenuous, so county manager will join us too, I've already been asking her and asking her, she'll show up. But is there any questions, commissioners?
I will be at association of county meetings the 10th and 11th, but I think you might count on Mrs. Gaston and myself on the 12th.
Wonderful, we've had such a wonderful turnout, we've had 30 up to 40 hikers on a, once a month, so I just wanna get the kids out.
Work between my son's baseball and my daughter's.
I know, I know, and quit hobbling the fields, okay there, Commissioner Roberts? Thank you very much.
Thank you, good report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, March 24th report, we've, since November, we've collected a total of $3,692,582.45 for Grant County. We still have an outstanding $1,975,539.57, that's on the 2014 tax season, which is quickly coming to an end here, May the 10th will be the deadline, we'll be putting out our ads next month for that deadline. As the assessor alluded to, we've been working with them closely to identify a large number of mobile homes, to make sure where they're at, and if they're, we had one this morning that we finally contacted the owner, and they say, well, we're in Luna County, we're not in Grant County. So we've contacted Luna County to make sure that they have them on the tax rolls, and they say, no, they're yours, so we're gonna have to get with the assessor to make sure that the assessment is correct.
Why don't you drive down there with the GPS and go, sorry, you're in Grant County.
Well, I don't know what his, what his, you know, system, how they work on that, but, you know, we're just, and then like I said, we have given them the list of all the mobile homes that we have in question, and so we're working on that diligently and trying to collect. We have collected quite a bit, we are starting to work on the delinquent taxes, not because May the 10th is kind of the deadline, but those that have been, have been over two years delinquent, we've been making phone calls, we've been trying to mail out and get addresses, correct addresses, which has been a big issue, and so we're pretty much getting a handle on those, and we will be sending out courtesy letters to people before the deadline of July the 1st, for the real delinquent list that goes up to the state. We're trying to, try to, proactively to try to help them do what they can to avoid getting put on the delinquent tax list. I don't know if, how many of you have, were able to read the newspaper, Silver City was very happy to report that they acquired a property for $10 through negotiations. Well, we had made a call to them to inform them that there's a $21,000 taxing on that property, which they acknowledged, and they're gonna try to see what they can do about taking that.
But that made out today.
Say again?
But that made out today.
Well, yeah, he said, well, I kinda was expecting your call, but I wasn't sure if you would, if we could go under the radar or not, but he said they were covering it.
So much for under the radar, you just.
Of course, you know, they get a portion of that back, you know, they get their share of, but the county will also get, tops of at least $7,000 of that, so.
Earl needs it.
And I've also been working with Linda, I mean, Linda and I have worked on the checkbook reconciliation from the get-go, I mean, we, you know, ever since before I was the treasurer, we were clear that our revenues, but we're gonna be taking a little bit more, we are taking a little bit more of initiative, starting with March, we have been importing the revenues from Eagle Treasurer to INCODE, which is the financial portion, and we'll be taking over what I requested November 12, in November of 2012, we will finally be taking back the reconciliation of the checkbook, the general fund. So of course, we're depending on Linda to give us the training that we've, she's been excellent, and we've trained everybody in the office how to do that, although I am the one doing it, and I will always do that as long as I'm there, but if, in case for some reason I'm out, the staff can go in and continue, so that she can have the information she needs on a daily basis. So, you know, unless you have any other questions or.
Any questions, Mr.? No, thanks, Dave. Let's present that. Nothing, nothing at all? Okay, Madam Manager.
I just have a couple items.
She's got a full page of it.
No, we've talked about the budget quite a bit, we will be getting with the elected officials and department heads to start compiling next fiscal year's budget in the next two to three weeks, and then Linda and I will start working on that, present that to you, hopefully the latter part of April, first part of May, the preliminary budget is due to DFA at the end of May. This year's budget, and you saw a page full of budget adjustments, we're all gonna have to, not just Earl, everyone's gonna have to tighten their belts for the remainder of the year. I will be getting with the elected officials, department heads regarding that matter, hopefully you can make some voluntary cuts on your own and not force me to do that for you, so be looking for that one as well. This is a very tight year, and we're all gonna have to pull together to make it all work. The other thing that I've been working on quite a bit is airport leases, John started working on this, I believe, back in March, April, before he left. What he had done was, he had had it surveyed out with the existing hangers, and also that survey provided for future development, I believe there's six plats for, for two to, it took in the two existing hangers and then gave four more plats for new construction of hangers. I've struggled over the last few months trying to come to an agreement with the current occupants of those hangers. It's boiling down to, they don't wanna pay for the entire plat, they only wanna pay for the building, I'm not what your, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that, maybe if they wanna only pay for that, they pay for the survey, or it's been a battle, and I know that you're getting some phone calls in regards to that, but it's not that Abby and I have worked very diligently as trying to, to work with them on taking some things out, changing up some things, we've worked on the price.
These leases, similar to the airports and the state.
They are, they actually brought me a lease from the airport in Las Cruces, and we did take that, we threw away the other lease that they didn't like at all, we did away with that one, we took the airport lease from Las Cruces, Abby put in the requirements that she wanted to see as far as covering the county's liability insurance requirements, they're still complaining a little bit about the insurance, and we can't budge on that because we have to cover ourselves, and then not wanting to lease a small acreage to cover what they would, they're actually using, they park their cars there, they're in and out of there, so I'm really not sure what the issue is with that, other than maybe it's just change.
Do you wanna put some, like, for me those leases on the agenda for Thursday, or do you want us just to talk them on ourselves here?
Well, you might just wanna just have some discussions on, now that you're getting the phone calls, because they're completely frustrated with me.
And I haven't had a chance to meet with him yet.
So, just so you know what's aware, or be aware of what it is that we're trying to do and trying to accomplish, that was where John started and.
So currently, you have a plat, platted out, and we have six or eight of those?
Six.
Six of those, two of those have hangers on them currently.
Correct.
So we've already paid for a survey for a certain amount of land that the hanger is on, and the people that own the hangers, or leasing the hangers, or whatever they may be doing to the physical asset setting on Grant County property, do not wanna lease the amount of land that we have surveyed off. So for us to change that amount of land, we would have to pay for another survey, or somebody would, and incur those costs. Sir?
We have them surveyed into the parcels.
It's done.
That's what we're talking about.
Has it been surveyed in the past for just individual buildings?
They have, yeah, they have, and that's their problem, is they only wanna pay for the.
They can charge them square foot, but if they don't understand, I mean, if we try, if we have, if we lease them less square foot, the square footage rate's gonna go up, it's not gonna change their rate, and they're gonna use this land around those hangers.
And I did have a few calls, actually I had two, but the biggest concern is the five-year lease, due to not being able to get the loan from a bank for a five-year term for that amount of money, but I did see both the Las Cruces Airport lease versus ours, and ours is substantially longer, but I'm sure that's stuff that's been looked at by our attorney that needs to be on there. It was substantially longer, and there was some complaints, some of the stuff we talked about was understood, but I think the biggest complaint, of course, is the five-year lease and also the amount of property that they're gonna be responsible for, and I think we need to just clarify the portion that we're still gonna be responsible for the road, correct?
Yes, we are, and to clarify the five-year lease, I've explained that to them, and we also went back and redrafted that section as well, to where they can enter into, we have to do five years or less, or it has to go to Board of Finance for approval, they may or may not approve that lease, that's no guarantee, but we have to have a signed lease to submit to Board of Finance if they wanted a long-term lease, that's been explained numerous times. And the way that we rewrote on the term, they can enter to a five-year lease and renew it, and renew it, and renew it. If they have to have one for bank financing purposes, then they still have to sign the five-year lease, and then we will submit that, and then we would just, if we get Board of Finance approval, then we would just simply replace the five-year lease with a long-term lease. No going back to the drawing board, no doing anything else, it would simply replace it.
And I know you've spent a lot of time on this issue, and I appreciate what you're doing, I know you've taken their concerns and looked at them, and I know you're working on it, so we appreciate that, but no one's ever gonna be satisfied, you know how that goes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna clarify that the five-year is not some arbitrary timeframe that we're picking, it's required by statute that we get state approval for more than five years when we're disposing of property, which is what this lease is considered. I don't think it was on the radar, this requirement in the past, or even that much until the last few years, but there's case law now that has been very clear of what we, of what counties need to get approval for, and I think we can't circumvent that just because they want a longer lease. They can enter the shorter lease, because right now, they're in their hangers for free.
So how long have they been in their hangers without paying?
I don't know exactly how long. Some of them, we didn't know that they had actually made the purchase.
Is it previous to their lease?
I, there's a gray area, I don't know exactly what happened, and they've transferred a lot.
One did and one didn't.
But.
Is that in the lease?
Our goal, our goal is.
That we have to be notified?
Yes. Our goal is to get the short-term leases in place, if they would like a long-term lease, we can submit that to the state, but we need to get something in place.
It seems to me if I was somebody down there in a hanger, and I wasn't paying ground lease, and all I had to do is come up here and complain about once a month, and you weren't gonna charge me any lease payments, I would complain every month. You got a good thing? I like to find a lot of those deals. I'd like to find one of those deals. So I guess my tolerance is waning. I don't know about y'all, but if they're not paying, uh, I think they need to be.
One, and then we have to follow the statute.
I think we should instruct the manager and the attorney to send them a letter and say, uh, here's your lease, sign the lease, or, or, or I guess we evict them, is that the right way to put it? I mean, you got to be, if you're going to use county property for nothing, that's wrong to every resident in Grant County.
Sure is.
We've been extremely reasonable in listening to them and making the changes that were reasonable. Um, I don't feel like the requirements are unreasonable at this point. Um, obviously there's an issue about the footprint versus parcel, but we're not, we're not talking about a huge amount of money here. And they do, they have to park their cars, they have to walk through and.
Do any of them have subject tanks out on that property?
Yes, one of them does.
Hey, yes, I want to look at that one.
Well, I think you, I think, I mean, correct you, I mean, we'll take an official vote, but, uh, I think you hear the sentiments of the commission.
Well, some of these people might be landlords themselves, so they understand about collecting their funds.
Well, they're trying to get, at least, if I was down there, I would at least be sending you a check once a month saying, I'm paying. I mean, I'm not being a deadbeat, I don't agree with your lease, so I'm going to tweak this or tweak that, but.
And I wasn't aware of the non-payment when we were discussing these issues either.
There was a lease that John had worked with before and they never came to an agreement, so that, we received no payment on that one for, I couldn't tell you how long. Um, yeah. We have, we have three, we have three, we have three, we have three hangers that are owned by someone else. They leased the labs for those. One has been very cooperative. He has signed his lease, he's paid his, his yearly lease payment, the other two are being a little difficult, but we'll move forward in that direction, so.
It costs a couple hundred dollars an hour to run those little airplanes around, so if, uh, if they got enough money to do that, they got enough money to pay that lease, because we're talking less than a thousand dollars a year for those ground leases. It's, uh, very reasonable, so.
So, that's the end of my, my, of the day.
You're complaining? Okay, and we, uh, we agreed last month that we were going to change our agenda to where Commissioner reports were actually at the commission meeting, but I am going to break that rule already. No, I just have, uh, one little, uh, one little thing. We are, Grant County is lucky enough that we are hosting a PRC Commission meeting Thursday at two o'clock here in these chambers. So I think that's more of an announcement that I want. So at that time I take a motion to.
I just want to ask something real quick. On the state camps that, uh, are coming in, we really want to get them some kind of certificate from the county, please. And, uh, of course for the teams, we'll get them the proclamations and sign those and give, give them to them, uh, please.
Can, Denise, can you get with, uh, Commissioner Ramos after the meeting, make sure that it's set up however he wants it?
Thank you.
Then, anything else? So I take a motion to adjourn?
From a second.
All those papers, six, five, seven.